Need to order the tops of slack board. It's May fifteenth, two thousand twenty-five, and we're holding this meeting in the Donald A. Russell Meeting Room. Please rise for pleasure of agents.
I agree.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic on which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Eddie, you call the roll, please.
You will. Roland Tufts.
Here.
Marie Brilliant. Ann Callahan.
Here.
Attending by Zoom. Ryan Holmes.
Here.
Matt Nixon.
Present.
The only one I didn't hear from is Marie.
Two seconds.
She just came on.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
All right, next item, town manager report.
Good evening. Memorial Day is May twenty-sixth. The Memorial Day Committee will begin to remember ceremonies at the Veterans Memorial here at Town Hall at eight forty-five AM in the morning. Following a brief ceremony, the parade will begin its travels to Brunswick for ceremonies on the Brunswick Mall. Next year, we'll have a brand-new bridge to go over. Town meeting is Wednesday, May twenty-eighth, at seven o'clock PM at the Forum Room at the Mount Arer at High School. You should have received a copy of the warrant in your main crop, your May crier. The warrant is also available on our website. That's it.
Great, thanks. Board and committee reports, none tonight. Public comment, any? No public comment, thank you. Our correspondence, anyone receive anything this week? Okay.
I'm going to start with like here. For being spoken about tonight. I did have one correspondence with the opponent, and we'll talk about that soon.
All right, there is one adjustment to the agenda, which is twenty-five dash thirty-eight, which will be discussed during the public hearing. Consent calendar, approval of the minutes of the regular select board meeting held April seventeenth, two thousand twenty-five.
So.
Move in second, all in favor?
Um, need to call a vote.
Okay.
Yeah.
And tell me again what the motion was. Consent calendar for the minutes, okay.
Oh, wait a minute, I missed one.
Matt Nixon, how do you vote?
I approve.
Thank you. Ann Callahan, approved or?
Approved.
You, Roland Tufts.
Same.
Marie Brilliant.
Can you allow her to speak, Jeff, without promoting her?
Marie.
Jeff's allowing her to talk.
Is she muted?
You raise your hand or?
Marie Brilliant, are you, can you hear us? Are you in favor or opposed to the minutes?
You raise your hand.
She's raising her hand, she's muted also.
Derek, can you hear me now?
I can hear you now, in favor or opposed?
In favor.
Thank you. And Ryan Holmes.
I voted in favor.
Thank you. So everyone is in with one sustain. Roland, thank you.
All right, next item, approval to open the polls at eight AM on June tenth, two thousand twenty-five, for the MSAD number seventy-five budget validation referendum.
So.
Second.
Second, all in favor?
We have to do that.
Oh, we have, yes.
The condition, oh, I have my hand.
Okay, to open the polls as is listed on the agenda, Matt Nixon, in favor or opposed?
In favor.
Okay, Ann Callahan?
In favor.
Roland Tufts?
In favor.
Marie Brilliant?
In favor.
Thank you, Ryan Holmes?
Yes.
Hundred percent in favor.
All right, motion carries. All right, next item, public hearings, twenty-five dash thirty-eight. Consideration and inappropriate action on approving a marijuana business license application, cultivation facility tier-two reviewed for SBC Main LLC tax map, R zero-five lot eighty-nine B two forty-eight Augusta Road. All right, we've, before we get to that.
Just before we get to the conversation on this, it should be known that I do have a conflict of interest with this one particular item. I work with SBC Main, and I'm going to have to stand from this and recuse myself of the conversation.
S T C?
S B C.
SBC, thank you.
Jeff is the SBC owner, so. Jeff's going to promote the owner. While Jeff's promoting the owner, this business has been in Topson, have been licensed since last June. They applied for a renewal, but then they've had an ownership change of the, LLC is the same, but the ownership is slightly different. So it needs to be treated as a new application rather than just a renewal. The town clerk has gone through the application, made sure that it had all the things it needed to, and Roland's got a proposed motion, got the things we would need to approve the license in it. But before that, we can have the public hearing.
Anyone wants to speak up on behalf of the business?
So, Mr. Steve Pico, with anything you'd like to say?
Uh, no, I could explain. So I have some other business interests and was the one hundred percent owner of SBC and combined my ownership with my other cannabis interests in Massachusetts. So still remain the vast majority of the shareholders and have one other operating partner who is, you know, listed on there. And we have a couple of small kind of friends and family investors from prior years.
Great, so I will read through. Oh, I'm sorry, do you need public comment on this? No, okay, so we'll just read through the facts as presented. So the map number is R zero-five, the lot number is O eight-nine B. The address, as we heard earlier, was two forty-eight Augusta Road. Zoning is rural, commercial. The application was found to be complete and received a staff review. There's an existing approved site plan at the site, and the proposed use for the existing facility is a permitted use. One license is being sought, a cultivation facility tier-two license. There are no applications on the waiting list. The application currently holds a cultivation tier-two license. The license would be a renewal if the application had not changed the ownership structure to that of a parent company. The only change is the addition of the parent company. The applicant has a licensure through the state of Maine for what is being sought locally through November two thousand twenty-five. There are no comments received that caused any concern for the license review. The application was thorough, went easy to navigate all items feared to be in good order. No issues raised by the fire codes, police areas, and the local background check was conducted. Say this again now?
No.
No. All right, so the potential motion to approve, there are no, I need to close the meeting at this point.
Close the public hearing.
Yeah, yeah. All right, so we're going to close the public hearing. We're going to follow with this potential motion to approve. Motion to approve the application of SBC M E LLC Marijuana Cultivation Facility Tier Two based on the findings of fact listed in the memo from the town clerk in Dumas, dated May second, two thousand twenty-five, with the following condition of approval. No changes to this approved license are allowed to occur. The applicant must return to the select board for any license amendments.
Second.
Move in second.
Who moved it? I'm sorry, Roland, while we were saying it, okay. I'm sorry, okay, Matt Secundin, okay. Matt, are you in favor or opposed?
I am indeed in favor, yes.
Okay, Ann Callahan?
In favor.
Roland Tufts?
In favor.
Marie Brilliant?
In favor.
And Ryan recused himself, so total in favor. And can I have that paper that you read the things on? Great.
Right, so.
Make sure you get them all.
Oh, it was four approvals, zero objections, and one abstentions. carries? All right, we're on to the next public hearing. If I open up it. The motion on this one is consideration and inappropriate action on the applicant, on an application for a special amusement permit for Sea Dog Ventures, Inc.
Want to have a representative of Sea Dog here?
I do.
Well.
pale.
All right. Let's see. Got some questions here, so we'll go through these. Location is at Sea Dog Restaurant?
Yes.
What's the official address of that?
It's one Main Street. I'm sorry, no, it's one boat in Bill Island.
One close to the main street. With license expiration date? Do you have that?
I'm not sure, I don't have it.
Okay.
Pull it in.
Okay. Type of entertainment?
So we do trivia, we do a live band on Friday, and then we have karaoke on Saturday.
Okay.
Yes, you guys still? Yeah, yeah. He's impressive pretty much every day.
Uh, the area for the entertainment?
Uh, we set up in front of the bar inside.
And the nights again, you can leave that, please.
So we do trivia on Wednesday, live music on Friday, and karaoke on Saturday.
And the hour of operation, have that?
Right now, it's eleven-thirty till nine, weekdays, early until ten, Friday and Saturday. But we'll be switching that after the morning, till ten o'clock, we'll be on. Still on brunch? Uh, we did Easter and Mother's Day. It's a lot, it's.
Yeah, I bet.
So it's setting up that entertainment area, do you move any furniture?
We just moved one table aside, so it, it's usually just one person playing, so they have space.
It's like the lounge. What's the size of the lounge in total?
The size of the lounge.
Size of your lounge in total?
Bar seats thirty, and there's sixteen seats around the cocktail tables.
I didn't hear that, sixteen feet?
Sixteen seats.
Sixteen seats, thank you.
Yes.
Okay. And then the size of the hall?
The entire inside space.
That's right, yeah.
It's where you know. It's on the application, it's like six thousand, I want to say.
Okay. And we've got to see in capacity, there's a parking. We have letters from the fire department, police department. There are no issues that have been observed in their inspection. That's pretty much it, okay.
I will duly approve the application for a special amusement permit for Sea Dog Ventures, as of right.
Well, we have to come out of a little meeting, but.
Oh, it's very stormy. All right, Callahan.
All right. Do you have something you want to say?
I do, yes, I'd like to move to approve the application for a special amusement permit for Sea Dog Ventures, Inc. Second.
Okay, and number twenty-five thirty-nine, Matt Nixon, in favor?
In favor.
It's Ann Callahan.
In favor.
Roland Tufts?
In favor.
Marie Brilliant?
In favor.
And Ryan Holmes?
In favor.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
This is a little out of order, the Trail Riders.
Yeah. There we go. There you go. All right. Twenty-five dash forty-one, new business, consideration and inappropriate action on approving a marijuana, excuse me, messing up him.
What happened to twenty-five twenty-six?
That's what I thought it was.
We're going to, we'd entertain a motion to take out of order, twenty-five forty-one, which is the Tops and Trail Riders ATV grant, because that'll be a quick one, and we can leave, so. Someone wants to make a motion to that effect?
I would make a motion that we change the order to address the ATV Trail Riders first before we move on.
Second.
Second, okay.
Thank you.
We'll call. Yeah.
Okay, a motion to take out of order, twenty, what's the number?
Twenty-five forty-one.
Twenty-five forty-one out of order, okay, Ryan, Matt Nixon?
Prove.
Okay, Ann Callahan?
Approved.
Roland Tufts?
Approved.
Marie Brilliant?
Approved.
And Ryan Holmes, approved. Thank you, fully approved, everyone.
Hello, everyone, Jenny Little, President of Tops and Trail Riders, nice to see some familiar faces. I'm here again advocating on behalf of the club in hopes that we can continue to do the great work that we've been doing for the past couple of years, which is allowing us to utilize the musical grant with the state, almost to get a lot, get that hard work done when we're working, or just get the bigger projects done with your help. It has proven to have been successful the past couple of years, I think we've done quite nicely, actually, nearly eighty thousand dollars, and there's been a lot of user groups that have benefited from this maintenance that we have done, from cyclists, to mushers, to equestrians, to ourselves, horse and stonefields as well. So what we're looking for this evening is to allow Mark the ability to sign off on the application as well as Pam to facilitate the process as we have been doing in the past. No big changes.
Any questions?
I would move that we approve the ability for Mark to sign off on the ATV Trail Riders grant.
A motion, we have second. I'll second.
Okay, Article twenty-five forty-one. By where I am, okay, Nixon, in favor or opposed?
Does ethics still value at the municipal level? I'm going to have to recuse myself on this one, as I'm a member of the club.
You're recusing yourself, okay. Uh, Marie, Mrs. Callahan?
Approved.
Thank you, and Roland Tufts?
Approved.
Marie Brilliant?
I don't know if I should accuse myself also, because I am a member of the club also. But if I don't have to, then I'll approve.
Does the board have any objection to Marie voting?
She shouldn't, it would be good if she didn't.
She shouldn't, okay, Mr. Holmes?
Approved.
Approved, so we have one, two, three, four approved, three approved, and two recuse themselves, okay? Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you. Now back to the board and committee policy, all right. All right, public, board committee policies, where are they? All right, we're now on to twenty-five twenty-six. Consideration and inappropriate action to review and accept a draft policy on attendance and related issues for boards and committees.
Shall we discuss?
So, in your materials, or a number of comments that were received from various town committees, that we have not received further ones since we put out that, other than we have the signed copy of the planning board one, that was, the unsigned copy was included in your package. So there may or may not be people here tonight that would like to comment, and so maybe you want to take that first, and then let me discuss you.
That works, man.
Any comments? The audience?
Fair enough.
All right.
I'll kick this off, actually, you know what? You want to say anything?
Sure.
Uh, this is a policy that I brought to light over time. Over the past year and a half, I've had the pleasure of attending committee meetings, board meetings, commission meetings, overall, if I haven't attended those meetings, I also watch them on Zoom. And over the past year and a half, almost two years, we've also learned a lot about the town and how a town should operate. Committees in general are an extension of the town, that fall under the same jurisdiction asserted by the select board. And what we've seen over the past year is just a lot of inconsistencies in the town and a lot of opportunity for growth, and this policy was kind of established to set guidelines and expectations for all of our committees within the town, so that we're all abiding by the same rules and the same principles, knowing that the decisions that are made on committee levels also affect the town and the town people, also knowing that committees are part of the town of Topsom, so that they are public, and which means that exposes them to FOIA requests and public information, and everything should be public when it comes to a town, any kind of town topics. So this policy was merely just put in place to set that guideline and really hold our committees accountable to making sure that they're doing the right things for the town, holding the expectation that we all as members of this town should uphold, and to also make sure that we're using the time as wisely as we can.
Fair enough. So, some initial thoughts. I know that there's a, I'm reading through some very substantial and well-put-together comments here, too. There is a theme of it being a bit heavy-handed. What I am one hundred percent on board in, on board with with this policy includes Section C, which talks about competitions, and that's not arbitrary, and some of the accused are being privileged particularly in this. I've actually talked to town councilors and select board members in four different towns on this very subject. And including everyone's favorite town emulator, Posgriff in Brunswick. And the response I received from councilors in Brunswick was absolutely not when asked if it was okay for committees to submit letters that were contrary to what the select board had agreed on in a public meeting. And that was one hundred percent across the board, from a lack of evolution. So this one is not difficult for me to get behind at all. We are the people who are elected to do the job, boards and committees are funded by us. And for us to come to a decision such as submitting a letter of support or particular stance on a subject, there's ample opportunity for committees to provide their input to us, either through public comment during a regular select board meeting. If one of us happens to be at one of those committee meetings, then that point of view can be given to us pretty easily. So this one, I'm one hundred percent behind Section C, which for those who don't have the benefit of having a computer in front of your fifty-three-page agenda, is about committees taking positions and making recommendations that may differ from what the select board has already taken a position on. Part D, also in favor of, there, there's a process that was set up to appropriately manage town resources. We aren't a massive bureaucracy like Brunswick. We are a small, lean town, and that's how we're able to keep our costs low, or lower, relatively speaking. A little crap in our Brunswick tonight, but this is a great example, because I'm frequently getting told we should be more like them, which you not want to go there. And then Section E, committee meetings shall be publicly noticed in advance and accordance. So this is essentially making sure that discussion with this critical mass of a committee, similar to the select board, where if there's three of us sitting at Sea Dog talking about town business, that's illegal. This happened in Auburn, Auburn, or those, and I have one of the two. L.A., several years back, it was all over the paper for several months, because councilors were meeting in bar, talking town business. So this provision means to stamp that out, stamp that out, and make sure that committee members know that they are, as Ryan suggested, an extension of town, and that their business needs to be conducted in a public way, and it needs to be noticed prior to voting. Besides than that, when I first joined the board, we had a lot of vacancies, and Lord knows that spending two Thursdays, plus town meetings, plus workshops, plus budgeting helps season here, or for my kids and my business and my school, isn't paying the buck. People are incredibly busy, I get that. So, I also understand that we get paid, what? Fifty-nine dollars every two weeks, or something like that, so we are getting compensated. For our time, I suppose, if you want to look at it that way, whereas committee members do not. And they're doing this because they're volunteers. And things come up, family stuff comes up, I get that, especially for some of the committees that aren't making really important decisions. I do, however, draw the line, but I think it's sort of the emphasis for what you brought to on this with the planning board. That is the, an entity that makes life-changing decisions for people here. And to have people not show up time after time after time, that's a problem. And I don't know if it's our responsibility to handle that, or if it should be the planning board chair's responsibility, which I think that is the first line of defense, if the planning board chair is not keeping track of the members, the planning board, especially someone who got appointed two years ago, recently, that's a problem. So, for other committees like conservation, energy, planning board, or zoning board appeals, like, I can understand there being a little bit of leniency with when people show up, and I don't, I'm not super interested in assigning a percentage or number of meetings missed before we start disposal proceedings for those particular committees. Kind of ambivalent on that, but with planning board, it is absolutely a necessity. And especially with the way the town is developing incredibly rapidly, exponentially even, we definitely need people to show up to the planning board and know all of the facts. Those are my thoughts, CDN good.
Um, I have one additional comment, too, that kind of spurred from uh, your comments, Matt, that I think it's pretty simple to state that you don't know what you don't know, and that falls until you, and it falls true until you know it, and you can't really know it until it's presented, and I think what this policy does is it gives everybody the expectation of when you become a committee member, these are the guidelines of what are expected of you. I don't think these guidelines are strenuous, I don't think they're tough, I think it's more about showing up and taking attendance and keeping minutes and posting minutes so that, you know, the flow of transparency can continue amongst the town, and make sure that the townspeople are apprised of all the information of all the things going on. And I do think that we've interviewed a lot of committee members this year and last year, it seems like almost every select board meeting we have, up until recently, we've had positions that were filling. And everybody seems to be extremely eager to join the committee for their help. And I do think that setting these guidelines and expectations helps them, because they don't know what they don't know. And if they don't know that they're supposed to show up every meeting, or they don't know that attendance is supposed to be taken, it's very easy to not do, just because they don't know what they don't know. it's very easy to not do, just because they don't know what they don't know. And by, by doing this, this allows them to really meet the needs of what the town is requiring. And it also holds an expectation so that we can be efficient with our time and the committee's time and the committee's time that requires staffing. Because that's another issue that we've also run into where our staff has just been over inundated with tasks from committee members to try and get work done that we don't necessarily have time for, especially like Matt said, we, we run a pretty lean operation. So all in all, I think that people will come to this and realize that it's not asking a lot. It's just setting, setting the points of what we need to see as a select board, as we oversee the committees and while we look at the committees and observe meetings, that all of that information is getting portrayed. Because there have been times where I've tried to find information out and it's kind of hard to find information out. Minutes weren't taken, or a video wasn't recorded, or something was going on and I wasn't able to attend the meeting. And I think there's people in town that watch the videos and they, they check the minutes, and if they're not there, how are they to know? This policy does small things like make sure that those things are put into place so we can act responsibly for the town and the taxpayers. That's all.
Comments? Think what might be helpful for me is we just real quickly went through this and tell me what areas or give me ideas of what you might want me to try to change. In response to-
Can I, can I speak? Can I speak? I just, I just, my, my personal preference is to leave it as written and vote on it that way. And I don't know if, before we get into all these changes, I, I personally support, I apologize for my voice, I, I'm sick. But I, I would prefer to leave it as is. I just wanted to state my case.
So if we take a vote on it and hypothetically, let's say it doesn't pass, that's it?
Unless you direct me to go back and make changes.
Alright, well, I'm filing. You're running in, and then I stand.
So we need a motion?
Yeah.
I make a motion that we leave it written, as written, to accept the committee policy.
Second.
Move it seconded, on favor.
Okay. The motion is to accept as is, been moved and seconded. Matt Nixon, in favor or opposed?
I would have to oppose this one.
Opposed, okay. Ann Callahan?
In favor.
Favor. Roland Tops, favor or opposed?
Opposed.
And Marie Brilliant, in favor or opposed?
Opposed.
Ryan Holmes, in favor or opposed?
I'm in favor.
Okay, we have two in favor and one, two, three opposed, so it fails.
May I offer some suggestions? There's a motion. Let's see, my biggest issues here, especially with section B where we're talking about attendance, whether the absence is excused or unexcused.
Excuse me, point, point of order. My understanding is if something fails, we don't work on it tonight, it has to be put on an agenda or future meeting, is that correct, Mark?
That's not what Mark just said, no.
I, I think if you guys, to put it in a future meeting, I'm gonna need some direction on what you want. So there's no, this has been noticed that this would be coming up tonight, so there's nothing inappropriate about going through it and giving me some suggestions on how you want to change.
Yeah, I just thought that was a point of order, my mistake.
So, do you want me to kind of go through each section, or then you can give thoughts on each one, or you want to?
I think, I mean, I've only got a couple things that I think would need changing for me to get on board with this, and that is just the excuse or unexcuse. I mean, if I have knee surgeries, which I'm gonna have to have probably in a year here, I'm gonna be out for six months, that's excused, and I shouldn't get thrown out of committee because I have knee surgery.
I disagree with that, Matt, because we have a provision in the policy that says any person who's missed more than they could have permission to come to the select board and state their case, in which case we would approve it if it was beyond their control.
That's only if it reaches the very end where we're about to throw them off, and if you read farther down the paragraph, it says absent is excused or unexcused in the fourth line of section B. Let's see. That was my big one there, and then for section S. Sort of ties in. And can I please finish?
Of course.
Section S ties in with section B. The event that a committee member who fails to follow the perjudice on his policy shall be considered as a slight board aside by reappoint, et cetera. That ties in with the unexcused bit, so I think everything really comes down to, for me, giving our town volunteers, who again are volunteering their time, a little bit of leeway when it comes to what counts as being excused or unexcused, that's really my big thing. Everything else? Good for me.
We just got thrown on justification why I added it that way. On, and, and I'm, Matt, I'm not opposed to what you're saying either.
Certainly.
But the point that, the point that we tried to make when we made this about having twenty-five percent of the meetings missed, whether they're excused or unexcused, was partly because when, when you volunteer for a committee and you're approved, part of the knowledge of that is that you're gonna go to one meeting a month approximately, or approximately twelve meetings a year. That's something that people commit to when they volunteer, and that, that's part of that expectation. And the reason for the excused or unexcused mark in there is for that exact reason. For if somebody does have to have surgery and can't attend those meetings, the point that we're trying to make in this is that we, we should have committee members that can be there to put their valuable input in. And if they're not available to do that, maybe they just take that time off and then get reappointed in. There's just too much to miss in, let's say, six months where you miss half of the meetings or half of a year. To me, that doesn't serve the town well or a volunteer that well, other than just being on a committee for the sake of being on a committee.
Valid. I guess my response would be when some jackass hit me with his Padang Aztec on Bay Road, I wasn't expecting to be out for six months.
Yeah.
Stuff comes up, especially for some of our, you know, some people who have been on committees for a very long time have an immense amount of institutional knowledge, more so than this board does. Some folks have history, they start district commission, conservation commission, you're a planning board. So to have them step down and then have to get reappointed at the end seems a little superfluous. And that's knowledge that we definitely want to hang on to after they get back from whatever it does keep going on.
I have a comment. In part B, it says that the select board shall notify the committee member in writing that the member will be removed from the committee thirty days from the notice and will give the committee member an opportunity to be heard on why their continued service on the committees in the best interest of the town. I think it's very clear.
We're looking for a problem that doesn't need to be solved here in my eyes.
It does though, because there's a lot of committees that don't have attendance or, or a lot of truancy within the committee members or committees. And when you go to half of the meetings, and it just so happens that half the meetings are taking votes of things that might be in your favor, it just, it doesn't look good. So it, it, for me, it, it really is about just the commitment level, and if something does come up, I don't think this board or any future board, I can't speak for them, but I, I don't feel like people would knock somebody off of a committee for reasons like that. I think that we do want to keep people on committees, it's just we have to set guidelines somewhere and twenty-five percent, we're talking about missing four meetings overall out of twelve, which should be planning a month and a half minutes, I don't see why that would be too much of a hardship for someone. And if they can't make it, they can't make it, I mean, that happens to us once in a while, some of us can't make a meeting. Absences should be allowed, for sure. And I do think in this policy, it's written to give the best interest into the committee member who is truant for what reason, but also that keeps the line of communication open with the board, as sometimes we don't get a lot of communication from the committees themselves. And if that was the case, that would give us an opportunity to hear from the committees on what's going on, why, why they should still be around. And I would say that we would always try to keep them on board because, especially if they're knowledgeable and been around for a while.
Marie has her hand raised.
You're muted, Marie.
Yeah. If there's minutes recorded, wouldn't the absentee person be able to review them and still be abreast on what is going on?
If the meeting minutes were recorded and posted, yes. What it, what it doesn't solve for an issue is, especially on boards, if that person does apprise themselves of a past meeting and have that knowledge, that's okay, but it's about public scrutiny in the public's eye. And what does that look like in the public's eye if they're missing so many meetings but only going to certain key ones? And this kind of eliminates that scrutiny of, of what people may perceive is going on in a committee or on board or in a commission. And again, they, they certainly could stay apprised even if they weren't there.
Don't get me wrong, Ryan, I think this is admirable effort here, and I totally see why you're doing this. I'm just, I'm still just not convinced that having us police attendance at all of our committee meetings is something that we really need to do. I mean, if the chair is exercising the power, the power quote-unquote, the way they should be. You know, I, I prefer to let the committees operate by excuse, unexcused with their chair. Again, with the exception of the planning board, that's, that's something I can't let go there. Again, outside of B, pretty much. Because we didn't even talk about A, but I think A is a good idea as well. If you're serving on four committees, you're essentially running the committee show. And that ain't cool, so if we can just come back to, I mean, my biggest hang-up here is excuse versus excuse, and just removing that, that section.
I think that's the intent anyway, is virtually it doesn't matter whether it's excused or unexcused. You could eliminate that and just say twenty-five percent or pick a percentage, I don't care if you want to increase it to thirty or whatever. We have to come up with a number, and I think from the last meeting, we came up with twenty-five percent. And it really, I think the point is it doesn't matter whether it's excused or unexcused. It's, are you missing meetings? And are you truant? And if you are, does that serve the town well? And if it does, then we can always keep people in, in, on a part of it because they can join meetings via Zoom while they're in bed if they're just resting their knee and can't walk. There's ways for them to participate if that's something, honestly, that might give them something to do and they have nothing to do. So if, if that's the big hang-up, I don't, I don't see why it wouldn't be a big deal to just remove that and just keep, and pick a percentage, pick, pick something just so we can have a number for the people to understand that our expectation is that once a month, you're gonna commit to that meeting, you're gonna give it your best effort for the people of the town, and if, if you're absent a lot, it doesn't serve the town well. But I, I do think that there are multiple opportunities for people to participate in those committee meetings so they can attend.
So I have one thing to add to that. They do have an obligation to let us know they aren't gonna be there. Even if it's five minutes, five minutes before the meeting, I mean, there needs to be notice given. If you don't give any, any notice, then how much interest do you really have in being on that committee?
The reason we came up with twenty-five percent was so that they could miss three out of twelve meetings a year. Twenty percent would only allow them to miss two, that's why we increased it to twenty-five.
So I'm sold on that, but that should be, so I mean, do you guys want to move ahead?
Well, I'm curious too, Roland, you voted it down, and Marie, you were not in favor. Was there anything that struck you that shouldn't be in here for reasons why it was voted down?
Just what they just said, basically, then you just can't have someone not show up and not provide some explanation as to why they aren't doing it. I mean, I think that's, that's something they owe to the board as to what, or to the committee.
Are you saying that's not in here right now?
What's that?
Are you saying that's not in here right now?
Not the way I read it, because I think they're extenuating circumstances, isn't medical emergency, yeah, I get that. But if it's just, you know, oversight, I mean, it's kind of like, write it down so you don't forget to tell people.
Yeah, scheduling, I'm, I'm just, I'm curious, because if that's the only piece to voting it down, it has to do with attendance, and it's more about just letting people know, that's it.
I agree with that, but the, the one thing is that that could be exploited as well, unfortunately.
The percentage could be exploited.
Well, not the, the, the notice that's given, basically, could be exploited. I mean, you know, if it's always, they're calling in at the last second, I mean, I just question whether or not they really have their sincere, you know, sincere interest of, of the committee and, and, you know, and are, basically.
And that, and I think that would be why we allow three. If they do that three times in a row and they miss those meetings, then that, if we don't hear about it, the committee chair doesn't hear about it, and attendance isn't there, then it gives us this, in this policy, that's what gives us the right to confront that and say, hey, why aren't you telling anybody? Why aren't you showing up? That doesn't give the town their best interest for the work that you're doing. But we wouldn't be able to say anything about that without a policy like this, or having some kind of language in there regarding attendance. Is there anything, Marie, that you were thinking about in this?
No, I pretty much agree with Roland.
So that's the only issue that we have to solve?
Yeah, I, I guess there needs to be some language in there that says if there is, in the, in the, in the opinion of the committee, someone's exploiting this for the first, some other reason, then that needs to be pointed to duration as well.
I'm only, I'm just trying to clarify, because like, we want to make something that's good for the town. And these are the conversations that we have to have, because something needs to happen. Maybe this isn't it, but as something, I think we need to, we need to start looking at. And in the attendance piece of it, in its simplest form, it's, you missed twenty-five percent of the meetings. We notify you that you've missed too many meetings, and then you have to come and check in with us and tell us why. And if we say, okay, that's a good enough reason, then you stay on, and if it's not a good enough reason, then that would be grounds for removal. Without, and from what I'm hearing on your side is, you want to make sure that committee members are telling people that they're not going to make it. Yes or no? And if they don't, tell them, that's not good. But we have no way to hold them accountable now if that's happening. This would allow us to hold them accountable for that.
But again, I'm not concerned about some committees, I'm, I'm really concerned about the ones that actually have, let's say they have, they have the ability to essentially make decisions that, you know, are what I call material. You know, it's not as if, you know, we're talking about, you know, it's not like the energy committee or something. I mean, I think the planning board is the one I really have my eye on.
Got it. So on the, on that piece, will we have to add or change language in here that would satisfy your need, what would need to be done?
I just think the planning, you know, the, the planning committee, planning board, you know, really has a, a higher level of obligation.
Yeah.
So I think it has to be a more rigid respect to what they can and can't do relative to attendance.
Would that mean adding a bullet? One for committee attendance, one for board or commission? Committee and commission could be one bullet, and boards could be another one, and boards would include us and the planning board.
I think that's probably where I am most comfortable, yes. I think that's probably where I am most comfortable, yes.
I have, I have an.
I don't think you, oh, I'm sorry, go ahead.
I think that we need to be consistent with all committees because when we make policies for the town, the policies don't apply to just one department like Public Works or Recreation Department. The policy reflects the entire town's consistency. I think that the policy should be written to be consistent with all of the committees and not just pick and choose which ones need to be overseen. That's just my opinion. I wanted to express that.
Yeah, something you moved to say, Ryan, I, I just go back to our charter several couple of years back.
No.
We can't be held to, for two attendance, or there can't be penalties for us unless we have a charter, basically. Got it. So unless we have a charter, that explicitly lays out, you know, select board, you know, there's no, there, there, I guess. There's no stick or character.
Doesn't, doesn't a policy fix that though? If it's in a policy?
Yeah, well, our internal policy could be good for the board, but assuming the board changes, then you gotta re-up it again or come up with a new policy. But you still can't. Like, let's say I missed the next three meetings in a row and I didn't tell Roland about it. And we have a policy in place that says we have to, you know, you can't miss three meetings. There's still nothing that could be done. I can't be thrown off by the board.
Because you were voted in by the.
People, yeah. Oh, so you're talking about us specifically only?
Yeah, you were just saying the planning board is like.
So we are not included in that mix. Got it.
It's special.
Uh, I see. I thought you were referring to all of them, which would change my mind on this whole topic. I was not aware of that, but turns out you're just talking about us. All right.
Look, let me tell you what I think I heard either from the, this room or the comments. I think I could go through, one of the comments was that it was seen too harsh or heavy handed. It didn't recognize enough the general, the time that people put in. I think I can go through and add some language to recognize that stuff. So I think I could, if, if you want me to. Of the alleged legal points that were raised in the comments, there's one I think is worth going back to the town attorney one more time. He did look at this. But the point the planning board raised is that there are some specific attendance things. They're above one of the few committees that has some in their ordinance. These are more restrictive than that. And so I think the thought was it's okay to be more restrictive, you just can't be less restrictive. But let me go back and double check that with the town attorney. He may say for the planning board, we'd actually have to change the ordinance as opposed to just do the policy. I mean, he didn't say before, but I didn't get that on point. So it might make sense to ask that. Something that came up there in Matt's I didn't think about is the zoning board of appeals maybe meets once a year. So you could miss one meeting and be gone. So it seems like this needs to be massaged somewhat to account for committees that don't.
No, if there's only one meeting and you're on that board and you miss it?
But if you don't get a chance to set the date, you know. So let me go back and take into account of things like, I, what I hear tonight is it's really important that if you're absent, it be, you let them know so that it could be excused. We also, from the comments and then some people tonight, maybe there's a way to give more deference to the committee chairs to raise the issue first. On the other hand, we need some minimum standards that expect people to be at the meetings. So I can tweak that some more and come up with a new draft for you guys to look at. And then another point that came up with a citizen was they liked E, but they thought maybe should explain even further that if you have a quorum, it is a committee meeting, which is that they explicitly say that, so I can massage that and add that in. So if those sound like things you'd like me to play with to bring another draft, I can take another crack at it and knowing, I'm sure you probably have more comments to what I come up with for B, but let me see if I can.
Do you want to also differentiate between the planning board and the rest of the committees?
I think I've heard that you guys want me to. But I also want to get the town attorney's take on the fact that that ordinance does have some attendance required for them to make, because maybe we can't do something more with them. So let, if it's okay with you, let me take another crack now that I've got all your comments and see if I can find a way, some compromise ground, so to speak, that can get us closer to where you want to be.
And I'm a hundred percent in favor of modifying this in any way. I think the idea is really just to provide, and I've said it before, but provide guidelines to people and, and a, a level of expectation so that they can stick to that. Whatever we decide or this panel decides is that expectation is irrelevant to me. I just want to be able to have something to give to committee members so that they can learn a little bit about what their role is more than just showing up to a meeting because there is a lot more extent sometimes. Especially if you're emailing back and forth between all of the committee members and it constitutes a meeting and you're making decisions in that meeting and it's not public. Those are things that people may not know they can't do. Policies like this highlight those deficiencies and, and ensure that their knowledge is is up to par with what we expect for the town and what taxpayers should expect, being transparent as possible. So whatever we do, I'm, I'm in, I'm all about. Proceed, sir.
Yeah, okay, great. We'll do another draft. Thank you.
How many of us, I just am curious, want to do a separate rule for the planning board? I heard you say that, Mark, but I obviously voiced tonight that I didn't support that. I want to know the rest of the board's view if they want special rules for the planning board.
Whether they want or can at this point, but they need to check to make sure that whatever the ordinance currently says or whatever our lawyer comes back and says, if we are able to make adjustments, I'd be in favor of that.
Yeah, I agree.
I think I'm just in favor of making sure that we have some sort of expectation that we can all agree to and that we can pass on to the committees and boards to just establish a level of expectation. This is, nothing's written in stone. It can always be changed. But to get something in place, to me, would probably be more important than the semantics of it.
Roland, Marie?
So there was an agreement of what, you know, what Derek proposed, I'm sorry. It's okay, Mark. You're wrong, right?
Comments, Marie?
I, I think different committees need to have different guidelines.
Thank you. I, I agree to disagree. It's okay. Thank you.
At time.
So the next one is going to be 25. All right, we'll move on to our next one then. Twenty-five dash twenty-eight, consideration and any appropriate action on a request to explore a TIF for, for, for Union Park. Expectation that a request will be made to present some of the information on the in-executive sessions pursuant to Title thirty dash AMRS, section two, five, two, four, two, one thirteen.
So right now, this is not an executive session. So Mr. Holman wanted to come back to talk more about, answer some of the questions that the select board had last time. He's going to start with a public presentation everyone can sit in for. And then you may or may not decide that you want to get more like personal financial type stuff on the project. If you decide you want to do that, you could move for executive session and he's willing to share that. But right now, I think first we'll let Mr. Holman share his further information and then you can discuss that and you may or may not decide that you need an executive session.
Plug into TIF present. But it will take me a moment, so I apologize.
Yeah, he may be quicker because he's already in the meeting to share.
Yeah, I talked about it right now.
Yeah, that might.
He, he might actually be better to do your slides because then he could promote the slides and you don't have to worry about feedback from your computer and stuff. So, so maybe you don't need to join the meeting.
I'm in the meeting now, so if I can, I don't see a share screen option. What's that, Mark? We're live, we're good? All right. Well, thank, thank you very much for having us back. Excited to get further into discussions about this housing project with the select board. Really appreciate your time considering this project. We have brought the select board and Nixon and requested our formal numbers in detail along with the construction bids that we've gotten because we want to be transparent, share, you know, all the data that you need and the vast work from us. And before we get started, I did want to disclose something that hadn't been disclosed at our last meeting, which is that I was the landlord for Ryan Holmes for four years from 2020 to 2024. And he ran that marijuana business at Fort Union Park. And so that was a financial relationship between us. It was always professional, wasn't always easy. But I feel that is important for the board to know, and I don't know if that's appropriate for recusal or not. It's up to the board, but I wanted to get that out there so it's not undisclosed.
Do they want to talk about that now so that if it's the board's tendency, I can step down? Before the presentation begins?
Let's do it.
Sure. I can, and I can address some of these points as well. Yes, I was a tenant of Dave Holman for four years, have not been a tenant for a full year now, left last May. I don't think the relationship was bad in any way. I don't think it was a hard thing. I ran my office out of a space where he was that I had some cannabis products that were allowed in. The hard part for me on this of accusing myself is a, a, a few points. One, I think of conflicts of interest, and I'm, I'm a huge proponent. If you have a conflict of interest, you need to recuse yourself. I don't think this is a conflict of interest. There are no financial ties to this. We're not business partners, so we have no interactions with each other in that case. So I, I think that's something that we need to consider. I also need, or just want to put out there that I think it's really hard if we have to recuse ourselves just by the fact of knowing somebody. And I think all of us have, we know a lot of people in town. And if anybody that we knew came up here because we had a prior relationship with, we'd have to recuse ourselves. I think we'd be recusing ourselves quite a bit. And, you know, the third, the third point that I want to make is it, it truly is a matter of public perception and scrutiny. There are ways to view this as from Mr. Holman's perspective that there was a tarnished relationship and I don't like him, so I could just be voting this down because I don't like him. There could also be the perception from a different side that says, why did this get brought up last meeting? Mr. Holman has already heard my opinion and I wasn't in favor of it. And with a lot of money at stake, maybe this is just a way to get me out of the vote. So there's multiple ways that we can look at this. And I, I don't think that there is a conflict of interest in this particular case. I don't think that I have a biased opinion on any of this. I think my interest is really in the town of Topsum. So with those basic points, I would lend to you and because I am somebody that really tries to hold myself at as high of a standard as possible, whatever you guys decide, I am happy to, are taken.
Chair, do you mind if I kind of outline what the town attorney's advice is on this too? Couple of years ago, we asked the town attorney to give us some conflict instructions in relating to a different project. And he gave us some very detailed ones and a procedure that most recently was used by the planning board about a month ago. So basically, his recommended procedures are based on the conflict of interest statutes. The first one is see if there is a ownership test. If select board member Holmes owns at least 10% of the entity that's appearing before you, that would be an absolute no, cannot participate. I think no one's alleging that he owns any percentage of this. The next part that could be a conflict of interest because of financial would be if he has a direct or indirect pecuniary interest. Do either one of you believe that select board member Holmes has a pecuniary interest that would be affected somehow by this proposal, which I think if it was still a tenant, that would be pretty clear he might, but.
Yeah, no, just for the past four years, not for this past year.
So I think we're out of the mandatory or the, I say the easier, I guess, decision. So then the next, on the advice of the town attorney is that we should ask select board member Holmes two questions, listen to his answers, and then the rest of the board other than him would vote on whether he should continue to participate. If they vote that he shouldn't, he can sit in the audience and participate as a member of the public if he wants. And if you vote that he can participate, then he can continue to do what he's doing now. So this is the first question that directs that select program home should answer. Do you think that in light of the points raised, circumstances and situation that you can participate in these proceedings without any bias predisposition or letting your relationship impact your participation or decision?
Trying to think of what the yes and the no falls in that.
Probably an explanation is better than a short answer anyway, so.
I do not believe that I will be biased. I believe that I carry the town's interest in the best. I don't think that there's a relationship that proves between Dave and myself that I would be anything but.
And then the second question is, will you conduct yourself and base your decisions in the proceedings based solely on the record of the proceedings and based upon your best judgment on applying the applicable and relevant standards?
Of course.
So anything else you'd like to add, Dave, before the select board takes a vote on whether they should, you should participate or not?
Yeah, no, I, we always had a good professional relationship, but there were times when I felt like there was arguing, you know, between us. You know, neighbors complained about the smell of products and we had to navigate that, you know, with Ryan or he would ask for lower rents or different, you know, lease terms. So it wasn't always easy. And I don't know whether that has been influencing his thinking on this or not, but I, I defer to the board and to Ryan and I, you know, I think he's a good guy. I'm not saying, I'm not anti-Ryan. I don't, I don't feel like our relationship is a tarnished one or, or anything like that.
So I'll turn it back over to you. So just any other comments from the select board, and then when you're ready, have Patty call it over.
Anne, Marie, any comments?
I don't see a conflict myself.
I don't see a conflict.
And I agree, I don't see a conflict, so.
So shall I ask each person?
Yeah, would be good for the record.
Oh, great.
Matthew, do you have something to say? You look like you've been waiting. Thank you for vacation.
No. I mean, I guess I base my experience out of state where you can go back and basically make killing, not double dipping after one year. Or you can work in the sector after having regulated that sector after one year. And again, maybe killing because of your own side knowledge. So there is precedent, I think, provided there's a year's separation here between any potential issues that may have happened. And I mean, knowing you personally, Ryan. I mean, certainly not pet buds, but and that's just not because we, we didn't have the opportunity and you were in the wrong territory. But Ryan's integrity is there for me. I've had good conversations with him and I, I think in this particular instance, I don't really see an issue with, with conflict. There's always going to be a tenant landlord dynamic that is not ideal. I had it with my own tenants, but I still expect them to vote the right way if they were in my position, so.
Okay, so we're going to take a vote. If you feel that Ryan, Mr. Holmes has a conflict, yes or no? Mr. Nixon, yes or no? And Ms. Callahan, yes or no?
No conflict.
No conflict. Mr. Taps, yes or no?
No conflict.
And Mrs. Brilliant, yes or no?
No, no conflict.
And of course, Mr. Holmes, you know, we won't ask you.
We just get the votes, yeah.
So totally no, they feel he does not have a conflict, everyone.
Hey, Justin, do you hear the background yelling is going across? Uh, yes, we're speaking through. Thank you, sir. Okay, well, we're, I'm going to go very briefly through an overview of the project, there's one or two different faces here than before, and then speak a little bit about the TIF, possibilities, and, you know, we heard feedback from the board last time that, you know, a compromise and more data was requested, we've brought that forward, which I have here for executive session, so wanted to introduce you again to the project that we're hoping to build 180 units in Topsum. These are the faces of our friends on Zoom, my best friend from college, Jason Lord, who's an architect and has done a lot of these projects with his partners, Kurt and Camilla, and we partnered on the San Piper building in Brunswick. So a bird's eye view of the site, it's 3.82 acres, not near any single-family housing, which I think is a real plus for this one. We're proposing 180 units of housing, which will be high efficiency, preserve the tree line, and we are proposing reducing the TIF amount from 75%, which we requested at the first meeting, to 50% as a compromise with the town that is more in line in recent TIFs that have been given. The massing of the building is here, so you can see what it would look like on the site. We're trying to be very efficient, we're not creating new roads in the town that the town would have to maintain, it's connected directly to a very pedestrian-friendly area such as there are, and it's very near services in the town as well, so geographically very sort of efficient and convenient is our hope for this building, and it would be four stories high, except for one section that's five in the back, to try to not, again, take up hundreds of acres of land to build this much housing for Topsum. It would have landscaping outside with native plantings for the amenity, covered entryway, areas for recreation, dogs, walking trails, things of that nature. Balconies for outdoor living, large windows for natural sunlight, which, I think, the balconies and windows we all learned in COVID is a real important thing to not be trapped inside. So these are photos of the building across the river at San Piper, and we would hope to do a bigger and better project here in Topsum. It has a fitness area, a gym, common areas like a chef's kitchen, community gathering spaces, game simulator, and indoor and outdoor spaces for people to gather. I think one of the words that we're hearing the most at San Piper is community, there's a mahjong group, there's a gardening group, you know, people really are bonding and connecting, which is what happens when you create one building, one common area, rather than planting lots of different buildings or planting lots of houses where people are physically disconnected from each other. So again, we have onsite backup power using heat pump technology. This is housing for average working people, it's not low-income housing for the poor, it's not luxury housing for the rich, it's middle-class housing, there's the phrase many of you may have heard, the missing middle, that's what we specialize in, that's what we'd like to do in Topsum, and that's what we're hoping for a 50% TIF to accomplish. We'd also be putting bike parking in every single underground parking stall, there'd be over 100 underground stalls with bike parking outside as well, so we're trying to make it very low emissions, high efficiency, and promote as much pedestrian activity as we can. It would also have three full-time jobs that would be new to Topsum associated with it, manager, leasing agent, and a maintenance technician. We would use some of the trees from the site in the project as well. So the challenges that we discussed a bit last time have only gotten worse in the month intervening, so that is not helpful. You know, construction costs are now over $300 a square foot, you know, Bowden Storms just over five years ago were 170 a square foot, and rents have not gone up in that proportion, so that's why we're not seeing enough housing being built, both in Maine and nationally. We're very concerned, you know, about the potential impacts of tariffs, we're very concerned about the labor market, which uses a lot of people from out of state and out of country to build properties all across the country. And insurance rates are also being driven up by catastrophic events that are not happening in Maine, but made a suffering rate increases because of those, so projects are not penciling like they used to, and unfortunately, ours is one of those. So this is the request that we have for a TIF, we're open to compromise with the select board of Topsum, we really do want to work with you to make a win-win scenario for the people that live here. You came with three, you know, basic requests of lower the amount of money you're asking for, we've gone from 75 to 50%. Also a preference for people working in Topsum, we're willing to do that, and a second preference, people living within a 15-mile radius, and we're very willing to do that as well. So we're proposing a 30-year TIF that would average to 50% over the 30 years, starting at 75% for 10, 50% for 10, and 25% for 10, which is a model of precedent that is used here in other places, and as developers, we would pay the legal costs of the TIF in that formation, and those funds can be used for schools or other purposes in the town. Quick overview of how TIFs work, they're used to greenlight projects that would not happen but for the TIF, they would not be viable without the TIF, and they're intended to create win-wins, where towns get exponentially more tax revenue, they get to shelter this revenue in important ways and develop important projects that later, when the TIF burns off or paying full freight, they wouldn't have happened otherwise. So some good examples are the Topsum Fair Ball, I don't think we'd have that ball perhaps without the TIF, that was done back in 2004. A good example of a precedent for a housing TIF is the Highland Green, that, there was no restriction or requirement, you know, from the select board to make that affordable, and those are, you know, extremely expensive residences, that is a different kind of housing than what we're proposing, and it did create much more infrastructure to maintain, so we hope that's looked at as a relevant precedent for this project. 2020 Wildloots in our San Piper project as well, use TIFs in a compromise with the town to create affordable housing as part of the mix. So to look at the numbers, and this is the same slide as before, but adjusted for a 50% TIF, where right now we're paying $13,000 a year in taxes, and it may stay that way, but if we are able to build a new building and do a TIF, that would increase from $13,000 to a quarter million dollars, and then to $500,000 over the course of the life of the TIF. This is assuming no tax increases in 30 years, which, if you can figure out how to do that, it would be amazing. In reality, the $500,000 will be closer to a million if you assume a 2% or 3% annual average escalation in taxes, but what that means is a 4,000% increase in the tax revenue that Topsum would get for this project. So to add that up over 30 years, we'll pay $640,000, or if we do the TIF and have a project, it would be about $11 million to the town. And when the TIF burns off, again, at a 3% average increase, the new tax rate for this building would be just under $1 million a year to the town. So we are looking to create a win-win, this wouldn't cost the town anything to do, and we hope that the sheltering benefits of the tax base, the fungibility of these funds to use for important town purposes would make it a win-win. This is a visual representation of that three-step timeline, you know, of this potential TIF. You know, the red line is the tax revenue the town gets if there's no project to proceed with, and the green is the tax revenue, the new revenue generated by the project for the town in this model. These are our costs of construction, I have thorough detailed quotes in here from two, you know, reputable builders that, you know, outline these costs. Those were done, you know, in February of this year, we're working on new pricing with them and aggressively pursuing value engineering to try to reduce the cost of the project, and we'll have new pricing soon, but this is, it's not going to be dramatically different, unfortunately, costs are just very high to pursue a project like this. So to reiterate, we want a win-win for Topsum, it's critical to have workforce housing, not only build luxury or low-income housing, but to have housing for people with jobs earning $50,000 to $100,000 a year, and that's what we hope to do, it'd be a very significant tax-based expansion from day one for Topsum, a good example of sustainability and design. You know, you see a lot of these 12-person or 16-person boxes with no architecture whatsoever being planted over in Brunswick, that's not our style, we want to make something really beautiful, and we work with architects to do that, and we actually think it's more cost-effective to do that because we reduce the amount of walls, roofing, everything else of doing one large building. John Hodge couldn't be here, he sent a quote to Mark, which may have been shared by the, to the select board, but I want to read part of that quote to you. I think John is a good person to help us navigate this kind of situation, where he's in charge of the housing authority looking to lower rents in Topsum, more housing would lower rents in Topsum, and that's, that's very much what we're hoping to achieve. John said, if the town had these performa numbers and the developer's forecast is correct, I would advocate looking for a middle ground that would keep the project alive without providing unreasonable profits. So with that, I'll end the presentation, we're excited to work with you, discuss with you, we want to make it possible. We also can't, you know, burden the project unreasonably to a point where it's not viable because we report to a bank, a bank will require profit margins, it'll require a modicum of safety, and ultimately, they're going to own 75% of the project, not us in the beginning, so there are things we can't do as a workforce housing project that if we were Lytech, low-income housing, we could do, but I'm very open to discussing, you know, what your priorities are and seeing if there's a meeting point in the middle here. Thank you, sir. You're welcome.
Yeah, thanks for the update, it seems pretty consistent with what we heard before, absent the concessions that were, that have been offered, so I found it very helpful, many questions.
Just some thoughts. I appreciate you coming down a bit, or at least it's not the average of 50, it's not 50 for the duration, for the split. John Hodge also said that their authority typically targets rental units as affordable household at 80% for lots of AMI, and that land ownership units to households up to 120% AMI. So if we want to take John's entire conversation in context here, I think that's also important to throw out there. I would like to see this happen, I just don't think, well, something has to change, either the AMI or the split, in my opinion. I understand this for middle class, and you're right, there really is nothing left for all either, you know, elite political classes, point over four, but the 120% AMI breakout, max monthly rent utilities, that graph from your presentation, where the chart said, what, 2017, for typically what?
Maximum rent.
Yeah, yeah, maximum rent. So I think this goes back to Ryan, the original point from last time around, it's like, that's considerably more than my mortgage, clearly, it's not going to be a lot more than mortgage if people are getting down, if there's everything going on. But it still seems, again, I'm not a real estate guy, I like to, but I'm definitely not, it seemed a bit high for me. So it's either that or the, you just mentioned that the bank would own 75%, is that sort of winding up with a proposal you have for the first 10 years of 75%? It's relatively sensible to be paying the bank.
Totally disconnected, yeah. Ironically, those numbers are the same, I mean, banks often lend 80%, but here they might lend 70 or even 65, I mean, it just depends on their risk appetite, so that 75 is a loan-to-value ratio, but totally disconnected with the first 10 years of the TIF. Yeah, and we, like, 33% of a project is a very large amount to have affordable, which is why it's at a high, relatively high AMI for workforce housing, you know, if we were doing 5% of the project or something like that, we could go much lower, you know, we're looking at our performa, there is still flexibility, but it's, we can't do 33% and 80% AMI, because that is precisely the kind of project that John Hodge can build with grants from Maine and, and, you know, 40-year loans purported that we're just not eligible for.
Others? I, I've got a couple of thoughts. I guess I'll save some of them for executive session if we get that far. One thing that I also want to touch on within your presentation is it, I don't, I want to be polite when I say this, it seems like a lot of the information is salesman gimmicking tactics, to say 50% when in reality it's 75, 50, 25, just that's the average, or at the same time, a lot of the thing was affordable housing, just, I don't, I don't, that's just me personally, don't find it affordable. The other thing is, when I look at TIFs, and we were all involved in a TIF workshop that discussed exactly what TIFs are for, what we should be highlighting them for, or proving them for, the basic premise behind a TIF is to help support economic development for town. If we were in Millinock in a very depressed area, and somebody wanted to come in and do a resort that would bring in a lot of people and a lot of revenue for that town, it would behoove that town to maybe provide a TIF to that because that would get something started, and it would boost the economy in that town. Part of what you were talking about with the Highland Greens and some of the other TIFs, those were all done before we developed, and where we stand currently in the town of Topsum is surprisingly fast in our development, and we're going through a reco change that's going to change even more development that's coming up, and where we stand in our growth is going to impact a lot of change, and it's going to change very quickly in this town, a town that, just 40 years ago, when I was a kid, I could drive down, I could ride my bike down 196, and now it's one of the busiest roads in the state of Maine, and I wouldn't dare send my own child down that road on a bike. So as far as when I look at the big picture of a TIF and the development of a town, or the economic development, my perspective from this is that, you know, what our town needs, because we look at a demographic, we have a population of elderly communities, and it's a growing fraction of our town, we have a fraction of young families that are in our town as well, and that needs to have a proper balance in order for our community to be successful. It's, it's, it's almost like the quote that says, you know, "A community will grow strong when old men plant trees, the shade of which they'll never sit." And then it's kind of what we do here, is how do we balance our community and what are the needs? We see our school department and our school systems declining in enrollment, and we need young families in this town, more so than we need, and I don't want to say more so because they're more important, just to bring back the balance factor of what we are as a community. Another part of this project also brings on an elderly model, more retirees or working from out of town, somebody that might be a young single person or young couple without kids would probably live there, that doesn't really help our school systems. And really, what I would like to see is a project in this town that helps develop the community as a whole, and I guess that's my sticking point, because I think the building's beautiful, I think I've driven by San Piper, it's a stunning building. To have one in town here, I could go with or without, in my personal honesty, but to start spending taxpayer dollars on a project that, a large project, and tie up our TIF funds or just draw it out over 30 years, going from, was it 15 before, out to 30, 30 years from now, at the rate of what we're growing, what happens when Crooker gets developed, if that ever happens, or what happens when 225 wants to get developed, or what happens when Main Street, the population density changes and that wants to get developed? There's going to be a lot of things going on in this town all at once, and I mean, I commend you for getting ahead of it, that's, that's for sure, but I don't know if, if this is something that we've done in the past with the 75, 50, 25 in this town specifically, and I don't know if what this brings using taxpayer funds is really helping or promoting Topsum and Topsum residents themselves.
Yeah, a quick correction, it wouldn't use any taxpayer funds, it would contribute funds to the tax base.
Doug?
I mean, like you, I want this to happen, you know, that's the bottom line, but at the, you know, at the same time. I mean, like you, I want this to happen. You know, that's the uh bottom line, but to the, you know, the same time. Is this, is this the most economic, advantageous project? I don't know. I mean, you need more information on that, but nonetheless, I I think you know where the sweet spots are around here and this is probably it in terms of, you know, what works. Um, I don't know what, if we can ever come up with a solution that's going to basically you know, fit every goal in this town, in terms of, in terms of housing. So.
Jim, what's your experience with the averaging years in place? Something we can see here?
Just Jim makes this with combined associates advisor for the development team, um, for the record. Um, it's just real quickly, that kind of model of like more upfront and phasing out over time is used on projects because of the way that projects get financed. Um, the money doesn't help them in terms of their loans and their borrowing when it's later on. And so their demand is upfront. So for instance, and uh we can share the details in executive session, but I don't think Dave minds me sharing the sort of benchmark. So we, you were, we would, you asked for some pro forma information. And my firm specializes in real estate financial feasibility and more and other things. And uh, so we create models, we create a model particularly that we use across the country for municipalities to uh help them determine whether a project needs support to be financially feasible, feasible, is a TIF or is a pilot in other state paying them who are taxes or any, is any kind of incentive needed to help a project be feasible? And so there's two benchmarks that we utilize to assess that when you take into all the consideration of the costs, the revenues and the gaps associated with that. And one of them is the debt service coverage ratio. So it is the debt to cash ratio. And the benchmark for feasibility is on a given year, it's got to be one point two five, meaning that you've got at least cash in excess of the debt at, at one point two five or twenty-five percent greater. And this project without some sort of financial assistance doesn't meet that criteria. And then the second benchmark that we use is the um equity dividend rate. I'm looking at my notes to make sure I get the terminology correct, but it's no, it's otherwise known in common terms as cash on cash. It's how much equity you put in a project in a year or have in, in a given year relative to the taxes, to the uh cash after taxes. And that ratio is an eight percent benchmark. And that's updated and benchmarked by the uh National Survey of Developers. So we use that as a criterion or that we do to be objective. And this doesn't meet that criteria as well. The reason I bring it up is because, and we can show you the individual numbers of the project um in executive session. And I want to be clear, the only reason we don't do that in public is the things like bids and people's financial information is competitive information for other developers. So that's, that's common why we wouldn't show that. It wouldn't be normal to be showing that kind of detail in a regular public session. Uh, so, um, but the reason I bring it up is to show the need for financing. And to Dave's point that the trade-off and the compromises need to be, to make it financially feasible, you could do more affordability, but it would have to be for less units. Because anything else starts to take away the dollar amounts and it makes it less financially feasible. Now, they may be nice guys and want to do that, but it will not get financed by a bank. A lender will not take that on. So they, they're not just talking about what they want to do, they're talking about what they're allowed to do in the market essentially. And then one final point too, since I'm up here, I'll be brief. Dave's point about it's contributing taxes, not costing taxes. The can, that, the number is fairly conservative. The fifty percent number is uh, you're not getting those taxes now. You won't get them if the project's not financially feasible. So that's number one. And number two, because of the sheltering, giving them seven, seventy-five percent, fifty and then twenty-five is money that is being paid for by the shelter. It's not out of the pockets of the taxpayers. If you had a project that wasn't sheltered, you would lose that amount of money based on the way state local financing is in Maine. Uh, on average, it's somewhere between fifty and eighty percent, depending on the town. Meaning you lose that much money for everything you do not shelter. And therefore the shelter provides an opportunity to break even or better for the town and allow a project to occur. And that's, that's the point I want to make. It's, it enables you to do this as a ma- ma- matter of policy and be fiscally responsible if you choose to do so. And I know there's different opinions about whether you want to choose to do so.
I raised a, raised a couple of questions. Can you go on the slide that shows uh the funding part of it?
Here?
Yes, thank you. And so it looks like you've raised almost fifteen million in equity so far, uh, private equity. The, the, the seventy-five percent of what you would not pay, you would only for the first ten years, um, as far as if the TIF was accepted. How does that make it, so I'm, this is a clarified question that I don't know. Um. Does it make it so the bank shows that you have a little bit more revenue and that's what makes it feasible for a bank? Because you're basically, instead of having to pay X amount of dollars per year, you're paying twenty-five percent of that where you can now pay the bank the remainder amount. Is that an accurate way of looking at it or not?
Yes.
Okay. Um, so in, in that state, how much is that in an annual?
Annually, um, if we're assuming a half million dollar, you know, tax burden without any TIF, it would be, you know, a quarter of that, half of that and then like two quarters of it.
And now So the essentially that percentage is based on the value of the building, what is done, that's going to change and the numbers are going to change a little.
Exactly, yeah. It's a round number now. I mean, it'll be very specific.
So if that's the case, you know, we project twenty-five or seventy-five percent over the first ten years and then we project fifty percent of the next years. I'm curious what the total of that amount is and what's, and, and what would stop you from raising more private equity in that sum to make the business model work the same?
The, well, it's, it's a source of revenue that doesn't exist otherwise, you know, the TIF essentially. But the only revenue this building will have is rent.
Right.
You know, and pet fees and, you know, smaller things like that. Um, it, it's so the TIF is essentially offsetting tax burden uh temporarily for the project. So it's considered revenue.
And
And just one, one more point too, just on that, and before you move on.
Yeah.
So think of the equity too of like, well, can't you raise more equity? Well, the equity partners would say the same thing. They'd be like, boy, I'm not going to put that next dollar in because it's, if the bank won't finance it, it's not like, it's just, they're, they're going to put their money elsewhere essentially. So it's thinking about when, when those numbers, those benchmarks that I gave aren't mad, whether it's debt or equity, it's the same idea. This project's not feasible. So it's not feasible in the market. Market determines it goes where it can make a return and it would not be making a return that a bank would finance or more equity would finance.
So then my final question would be in, in that train of thought that I was having. It still costs the town the mill rate to take care of that building, right? So what is it, twelve fifty is our mill rate? Whatever the value of that town is, that share that would typically come into the town would typically be put back into that specific building as a taxpayer or maybe not all of it, but certainly most of it. So essentially, the way that I'm looking at this from a business perspective, and correct me if I'm wrong, it's almost like the, the business costs about ten thousand dollars a month. These are makeup numbers, but the business costs about ten thousand dollars a month. But I'm only getting a thousand dollars of revenue every year and thirty, for thirty years. So for ten years, it'll shift every ten, but thirty years is a long time to go without. And it still is going to cost the town over thirty years, that amount of money over time. Am I looking at that wrong?
Uh, the way I would look at it is either the existing office building stays as it is or the town gets, you know, a quarter then half, then three quarters, then full tax value from a building that wouldn't have happened otherwise.
Yeah, in other words, it not, your, your reasoning is, it's a good question. So let's just be clear about that. The, it's that the key is the plot four that was on that graph that shows like what you get with the red versus the green. It just would not hap, it's not going to happen without the town doing something. And so that, so do you want added revenue? For which essentially, I have to be careful how I say this, because because of the sheltering, other communities are paying for it. And so like in other words, do you want to help forget this exact project, but in theory, do you want to achieve the results of this project? Get more revenues in the future than you otherwise would get and have it be paid for in terms of the TIF by other communities because you are being enabled to shelter it. So for instance, if you don't shelter revenue, the, the po- the problem with the state of Maine, the way that we do things is that without, because of the way, primarily the way the schools are funded. Like essentially it says, if you have more value, you get less state aid to education, you get less county, you pay more county tax and you get less uh revenue sharing. And to the tune of every time you raise a dollar in valuation, the town in Topson loses somewhere near sixty, seventy percent of that. Every single time, forget this project. So this says, because it's a housing, because it fits a need, because it's enabled in state statute and you can do it locally, you can help a developer do this project and gain that sheltering to pay for the benefit and get taxes you otherwise would not receive. And therefore it is tied to economic development. It is fiscally responsible, assuming you want this kind of project. So I'm not here to say what, Ryan, what you should want or what somebody else should want. I'm just telling you the math.
So I was doing a little math. Uh, forgive me, it's rudimentary. If I were to make an assumption on a building assessed at seventy-two million, um, just as a round number. And I were to apply the formula of the assessed value versus the share of what that building would bring to the town, it would, it would amount to nine hundred thousand dollars. That's what it would cost the town essentially in keeping that building going through tax revenue. However, through the first ten years, we're only going to receive two hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. That leaves a six hundred and seventy-five thousand dollar gap. I guess where my thought goes with that is that's a large gap for services that may be needed there. And how do we make up for it without raising taxes to the taxpayers to cover those costs? Thirty years is just a long time to be in the red. And before we start realizing the revenue that we're talking about, and I know it's real, the revenue will come in, but we're now talking about thirty years before that happens. Ten years is a very, the first ten is very significant. The next ten is more realistic and the last ten is even better, you know, but it's going to take us thirty years to get there. How much do we have to put extra for services over the course of thirty years? And then when we're finally receiving full benefit of tax dollars, how long does it take to recoup all of that money that we put back into the, or put into it via the tax dollar? We're talking about a fifty-year process here, what we break through.
I think, if I may, um, uh, in market, I kind of need your help on this as someone who understands the town budget. The assumption that of that was a seventy-two million dollar building is going to cost nine hundred thousand dollars in cost to serve is erroneous. Like that's not the case. You do not need nine hundred thousand dollars of taxes to service that building. It's what that building would generate in revenues. And then the marginal cost is low in terms of what you would serve it. Like in other words, it would cost a lot if you had to add another police building in for more uh shifts of policing or if you had to add more public works, facilities and so forth. There's nothing in that building that suggests that that's the case. So in other words, you're getting not nine hundred thousand dollars worth of revenue. The cost to serve is significantly lower than that on an average basis and a marginal cost basis over time. And now you're bringing in revenues to support some other work throughout the community. And then eventually you're getting the full force of that building in terms of its revenues. So equating the fact that they're paying nine hundred thousand dollars in taxes with cost to serve is just not correct math.
I mean, I guess we're disagree, or I disagree philosoph, so philosophically with that is I know what the cost to provide services to a four hundred thousand dollar house on Arbor Avenue. And it's, we take the assessment and take into account of the town budget, we come up with a number. The person on Arbor Avenue is going to say incrementally, I haven't called the police department ever. You know, I, last time I had a rescue at my house was ten years ago. Uh, but we still get to staff the rescue, we still get to staff the police department. And in order to do it fairly unjustly, we try, you know, everyone has to pay their share of the clerk's office to register voters.
Justly, not injustly.
Oh, just, and justly, but uh, we always do things justly in Topson, not unjustly. Um, but so I, I, I understand the argument that this is the airplane that's already flying or adding a few more seats. But if we do this, say for this property, then we're going to have to be ready to do the same thing for the apartment building they want to build across the street if they're willing to meet the same standards. And the one that they want to build out by, across from Market Basket, if, if they meet the same standards. Um, in time we add all those new units. What, right now, we have, we staff for two rescues at the fire department. Um, frequently both are busy. Um, we have a third in case of emergency, we in Brunswick share. Um, we're getting close to the point we need to add a third crew. If, now if we had a third crew, we'd only set two firefighters. We have, we have to add probably eight. Um, and the rest, rescue we have on orders for one hundred and thirty thousand dollars. Um, so.
So that marginal cost would
So, so to me, yeah, to me, I don't think it's really a marginal cost analysis. I, I think it is a taxpayer um subsidy, so to speak. Doesn't mean it's a bad thing to subsidize, you know.
I mean.
Uh, if, but we're also limited to how much we can subsidize, uh, because we've got the kit, we can't do more than the two percent of the land area and five percent of the town's assessed value. So to some extent, we, and we have a ton of TIFs. And to be honest, we have a lot of TIFs right now. We're far from maximizing because we don't have good uses for the money. Um, so a lot of them, we don't shelter anywhere near as much as we could. So the sweet spot for Topson is finding a TIF use that we can match a hundred percent. Cause then we've got the sheltering that you referenced and we've got a use that someone would have paid anyway. Um, but so there's the equitable concerns of trying to treat other people similarly. Uh, you know, and I, I know you had asked me before, would you support this? And I kind of gave you, I said, I'll stick my neck out for you. If it's fifty-fifty, because right now hackam attacks get fifty-fifty, it's hard to give something better to something that isn't, isn't affordable. And I said, I would stick my neck out for you if you could come up with eighty or ninety percent. Um, you know, of AMI, because right now we've got, if you have two full-time jobs and your family, you can't, you know, you, you're too high, you have too much income for hackam attack. Um, but a lot of the two income jobs we have with the family right now aren't going to be enough to afford your place at twenty-seven hundred a month, uh, at a hundred twenty percent AMI. Um, so this isn't that you don't have a nice, uh, in my opinion, and all this is my opinion, but I felt like I was asked for it, otherwise I don't give.
Yeah, no, I respect that.
Right, man. Uh, so if, if we're at eighty or ninety percent of AMI and we're helping some of the people that are working, you know, it's a family that say they've got two incomes and one of them works at Cropper's or one of them works at um, some of the Topson for our model things, then it's like, okay, we can go out and try to sell it to the public. Um, I don't know if to the extent you guys saw anything on Facebook, but to the extent there are any comments, they were, yeah, you know, we want the select board to be careful with their money and we don't necessarily want them giving in for a, a private project. Um, so I'll shut up because that's just
Mark, I, I appreciate your comments and, and I think the reason that we have gone to a main housing TIF was from you to be able to use this money for schools. You know, it's a much higher amount of the project, it's a third of the units that, you know, we've been asked to deed affordable. Um, and that, you know, at eighty percent AMI would cost far more than the benefit of the TIF. I mean, it, it would not be financially beneficial and it's not close. So I mean, I, we couldn't do that. I mean, we could do it with a model like John Hodge or, or something like that, but um, it, it would, it would be a multi-million dollar more cost in lost rent than the value of the TIF. So what we're looking for, you know, again, staying at this thirty-three percent level for So what we're looking for, you know, again, staying at this thirty-three percent level for main housing, which you've said is very useful to the talent. Can be used for schools, which is a big need. Um, you know, we, we can't go dramatically lower than one-twenty. You know, we've, we've run two scenarios that, that I'd like to throw out to the select board and, and see if this can be a compromise. Um, you know, cause it still provides TIF benefit and it's, it's cutting down, you know, further below what we proposed. But we could go from one-twenty to one-ten, which I know doesn't sound like a very big compromise. That's hundreds of dollars per unit, per month less than rent and it is a very dramatic difference. Every ten percent down you go for all thirty-three percent of the units. I, you know, I, I think semantically that doesn't connect and resonate with most people. We do have a chart of like what the AMI rent levels are, if that's helpful for people to look at. Um, the other possibility, and it's almost the same financial impact, um, would be doing ten units at eighty percent AMI and the rest at one-twenty. Um, and so ten families or people here in Topson would get a very low rent, you know, relative to what market rates would be or something like that. Um, but it, and that is about twenty percent of the value of the TIF, just those ten units at, at eighty percent AMI. Um, so it's a, it's a significant reduction. Um, but we do wanna make this work with Topson, we do wanna make a compromise with you and, and we're willing to. Work harder on our end to make that possible, but I do need to just be upfront, like eighty or ninety percent is math that doesn't work for us. And, and if that's what the select board would need, I, I don't think us or any other market rate workforce housing project is gonna be able to do thirty-three percent of their project at those levels.
I, I have a question for you.
Sure.
On your chart that you have up now, it says that the land and carrying cost is two million, four hundred thousand dollars. And it's only three point eight-two acres, which is the equivalent of six hundred and twenty-eight thousand, seven hundred and seventy-two dollars per acre. And I know that carrying costs are things like legal fees and property management taxes, that kind of thing. How did you come up with this number?
Yeah, that, that's a great question, Anne. Um, in Maine, there's sort of, I would say, three kinds of land that you could look at as a developer. Um, one would be land that is not really zoned or deeded for development, other than maybe a single-family house. And that might be anywhere from ten thousand to a hundred thousand an acre. Um, and it's thought of on a per acre basis. Then if you're a developer, you're looking for land where you can build, you know, multi-unit project, if you're, if you're building housing. You know, and so a housing developer, just to use round numbers right now in Maine, you know, is paying anywhere from like fifteen to twenty-five thousand dollars. Per unit for land that they can build on. So if they can build a hundred unit building on land, you know, you would expect that to cost between one point five and two point five billion dollars, just, you know, to use a, an example. And then if you have a fully permitted project, you know, if you've gone through the full entitlements process, you've got your permits in place. You've got all your, you know, shovel-ready project to go, that would be worth forty to sixty thousand dollars per unit. So in this case, you know, four to six million dollars or something like that. Um, so that's why, you know, land where you could build a hundred and eighty unit building and you've, you know, done hundreds of thousands of dollars of architecture and engineering towards that effort. Um, is different than just the land where, where you would have a house or two or something like that, if that makes sense.
Oh, wow, those are, like, architecture and design, those are more soft costs, correct? And are not included in this, or they are?
They are, yep, that's the fourth line down, soft costs and contingencies.
Oh, yes, mm-hmm.
And we have a much more detailed breakout if you wish to see it in executive session.
I'd be interested in going into executive session to see what you have to offer.
I've got pneumonia, so I'm trying to like not stay around people much as possible, so. Don't worry, I'll leave that alone.
I'm not touching the gavel, but thank you.
Sorry.
Hello, to Ryan, that's.
Yeah, I mean, I know it sounds like I'm against the project, but I think as part of our job is like we're to ask tough questions. We hear a lot from our community members and it's important that we express those interests out and to get clarified what we have. But I would be interested in going to executive session as well.
Do you take any public input regarding executive session?
These, these two gentlemen have been here the whole time, I think, to give you some input.
They just meant for last time, but I suppose we did, certainly, thank you.
Thank you, I won't repeat today, so last night, the most part, anyone who brings a perspective and I'm just speaking as resident of Topson, I'm Kurt Newville, fourteen-year student of Ryan. I will say, uh, again, that Topson needs housing and, uh, I, I asked the, uh, town staff today to give me some idea of the number of building permits pulled for housing. For the last couple of years, in two thousand twenty-three, there was actually thirty-four single-family homes. Twenty twenty-four, there's thirty-four single-family homes that ate this far, this year, so far. The only other ones were the thirty-eight units for the Topson Housing Authority. Uh, and of course that wouldn't happen unless they were heavily subsidized. So in two and a half years, we've done seventy-six housing units, none of which are any A on. They're just straight up market making, they're sprawling further out into the countryside. Um, so this project represents an opportunity to have a hundred and eighty units and sixty units. That may not be, you know, you really wanna see for the AMI range and I hope you can negotiate with, but that sixty boom. Happens all at once to increase the housing in general and the housing target for workforce folks. Um, and so I think that's a real value in this project that is, uh, important to take into consideration. And that also represents a hundred and eighty dwelling units of people that are gonna shop in our community, eat in our community. In other ways, support the economic prosperity of our town. And so, um, again, I would look at that and, um. In terms of TIFs, I know a lot of your places TIFs are for a little work, uh, you mentioned that we have a ton of them. And I think Topson have used, Topson, uh, as a town has used TIF funding as a development tool very effectively. And so if we can work with somebody like this coming into town, uh, I think it's great. And I would also say, is, is looking at other folks, people say, well, Dan Campbell didn't get it, so. Well, Dan Campbell's project is an M two Y. Maybe if he got a TIF, he could have made the numbers work out. People say, well, it's not fair, how can we get a TIF now? Well, for the last decade, we had three percent, five percent commercial interest rates and now they're eight, that's not fair. But we do have an opportunity to be proactive, uh, with this folks. We have an opportunity to turn a land that's thirteen thousand dollars a year annual to, you know, whatever the slide showed. And one thing I do know is that the town costs are gonna go up and up. We have done a great job minimizing our costs and running lead, but there's no two ways about it. All of our insurance costs, our staff costs, operating costs are gonna go up. And so I ask you as our leaders to also think, you know, progressively about increasing our tax base. So that we continue to fund our town services and staff in the future. And whether it grows slowly or a lot, I think this is a really great opportunity to, um, to accomplish it. So I just encourage you to continue to keep it wide open beyond just looking at this, well, this is some sort of gift to a developer. And look at this has a real potential to be a win-win for the town.
Beadon Chair, board members, town staff, and the public. My name's Andy Sturgeon, I'm a member of the CBIT committee, I'm also the Chair of Topson Development, Chair of the Board. Um, a couple, one, one thing you said, um, that early in the evening was you thought we were developing at a fast pace right now in the town of Topson. And I think you heard the numbers that, that Kurt just mentioned, I think, I don't think we are.
That's where the dance off, I'm talking commercial.
I'm talking commercial too, and we've got Market Basket and that's about it.
Disagreeing, I don't serve, continue please.
No, I'm, I'm, I'm speaking on behalf of, of Topson Development Inc. and, um. There's a weird crossroads here in the community and we've got crossroads physically between, between Lewiston and Bath and Portland and Augusta. We separate in the middle, but we're sitting on a crossroads of where are we gonna go? And we've got a lot of potential again, and we're a corporate quadrant and other vacant lots across there, across the interstate. Um, next Tuesday, you're gonna hear a presentation from us on the cost of the infrastructure that we need to upgrade to, to develop in the future. And, uh, Topson Development Inc. is the economic arm of Town Topson, Topson right now. And we feel that TIFs are a tool in the toolbox to go to that next step of getting a bigger tax base, more growth. Um, and we feel that that is gonna be a solution to, to our tax issues in the future and we think that Topson has a huge potential. But more importantly, I think when you look at a TIF, you need to run a model. And if that model shows that it's feasible and is, is fair for the town and for the developer, then TDI will support that. I believe that that's the case here, that they present a model, I'm not looking at the media, but I believe that that model will show that. And TDI has said that we would support any TIF if the model proved advantageous for the town. And I, and I think, uh, you know, that model, if they're gonna present it, but certainly anybody that's gonna come in the future. We're gonna ask them to have that model if they're working with us, make sure that it works for the town and works both ways, so. Um, we feel, and again, there's over two hundred years of economic experience on, on the TDI board with all the members, it's a great board. And we really feel that Topson has a great opportunity to see a lot of development and make this a great community in the future. Thank you.
Someone wants to move it, huh? If someone wants to move it.
Yeah, hold on, Ryan.
What's that?
All right, uh, I move that we move into executive session for someone to, I have thirty-eight, MRS, section five-two-four-two thirteen.
Wait, a motion, a second?
Did I give a second? I didn't.
Second.
Thank you.
I don't think I heard it either, so, okay, all favor?
Round the horn, Patty.
Okay, twenty-five, twenty-eight, move into executive session, uh, Mr. Nixon, yes or no?
Yes.
Mrs. Callahan, yes or no?
Yes.
Amy? Mr. Tufts?
Yes.
Yes? Mrs. Brilliant, yes or no?
Yes.
And Mr. Holmes?
Yes.
That is a hundred percent yes for us.
Um, before we do anything else, logistically for Marie and, or it's Brilliant and Ms. Callahan. Um, we're gonna have to, to make an executive session, we're gonna stop the recording and we're gonna pause the microphone and the screen. So it'll be a black screen if anyone else is watching this online. Um, we're gonna call you on separate cell phones and put you on speaker so that you can hear what's said in the room, both. Um, select board member Brilliant and select board member Callahan. Um, and then for Jim's benefit, there probably will be something public at the end of this, so if you wanna wait out the hallway, you'll.
Are you too?
Um, tonight's not on YouTube because of all this, but it'll be on YouTube in the next couple of days, but it's not, um, live on YouTube tonight.
Where do I find it tonight?
If you wanna wait in the hallway, we'll let you come back in.
I can stop in the morning, I did my bagel.
No, I need it tonight.
So, yes, we'll know you're in the hallway, we'll come get you.
All right, thank you.
Sit in here that we.
Yep.
Is it okay to get in one minute bathroom, right?
Yeah.
I didn't know, I didn't want to be out or.
No, no, do you know what the bathroom is?
Yeah.
For the days when there was no zone, no phones.
Yeah, I, I was on my town budget committee and my perks and rec committee and you couldn't always predict what was gonna get debated and how.
I was not, um, zone appeals, you know, uh, for a year, for multiple years and it was like, none of that, you had no technology, you know.
Yeah, it was awesome, I wanna go back to those days. All right, so we call on exec, um, I think, uh, at this point, we need to sort of figure out what direction we wanna go in. Um, I don't necessarily feel like I'm ready to commit to anything this evening and I know that sounds filthy-washy, but I think there's still a few things we need to figure out. Uh, and just curious, the rest of the board's thoughts on this? Um, if we want to table a decision for TIF this evening pending some additional information in the form of, um. Here, uh, maybe just, yeah, well, I'm, I'm just trying to think like how they show it to us, but I'm gonna go to another exec and I don't think they'd be able to, so. I think we probably have to go to another executive session, look at, uh, some of the, uh, the split ups and the AMI, um.
Although actually, I think the, the purpose of the executive session was just to verify what they've said is that it's tough to make this work. Um, the actual percentages of how many, what percentage of AMI is largely gonna depend on their spreadsheet that they can make it work for it. And they probably, just like we did most of that in the open session tonight, they probably could come back and say. At this split with the town and we could do this amount of units or something, so we might not need an executive session for that.
Yeah, I, I think that's right, I think if we're not showing the whole reforma and we're just focusing on what are the terms of the TIF. And, and we can show you, you know, kind of our math behind that, I, I, I agree, I think we can do that publicly.
Cool. You guys have any thoughts on that, or throw it into a motion?
No, I mean, I, I think it's good to see the willingness to move around, um. I'm not for or against it at this point, I suppose, but I'm, I think one of the best abilities that I have as a person is my ability to change my mind. So if there's information that's presented that shows that it does work with the town and is beneficial to the town a little bit more. I think there's, there's a way over.
I appreciate that.
And your thoughts? Oh, you're muted, I'm sorry.
I'm really hopeful that we can come to some sort of agreement.
Can I just ask one quick question so we can do the right work?
Certainly.
Before you close, um, I just wanna make sure that if we could have just a summary of the guidance. And what I heard was, and, or do you wanna give it or should I give it?
No, go right ahead.
All right, so it sounds like. Regarding the split of the TIF, the dollars, the fifty-fifty overall, some concession on that that brings it flatter, less and flatter over time. In other words, seventy-five, at, you know, coming down to something closer to the sixty that you've done before, or not using that exact number. And making it consistent would be one, so some level of give back to you on the number we came in with tonight on that would be one. And two, some level of the improving the one-twenty percent of A, of AMI more, use some units at some number less than one-twenty. Some combination of those two things would potentially be considered. Or like you would like to see those.
I can't speak to the board, but that's what I would like.
Yeah, is that fair?
Sounds good.
All right.
And the, uh, Mark, I'm curious also on you, your thought for the TIF numbers. Considering the scope of the future of the town and with this project going in. Do you think that there's a place or we're getting close enough to a place to where this is not going to. Put the town in distress over the case of having additional costs that need to go out because we like more police, more fire. Or of other things that need to happen for the town. Um, I know we're getting, like you said, we're getting close to that, but if we're doing a thirty-year TIF and our town continues growing, I mean.
The first part of your question is the easy one, um, cause I actually talked about Justin this afternoon. Um, this wouldn't make a darn bit of difference as far as our acreage, because this is already in a TIF, so.
Right.
It's not gonna increase our TIF acreage. Um, and because of the fact that the TIF number is based on the original assessed value, the percentage of the town that we can, and this is so low, so to speak. Um, Justin said, you really don't have to worry about this project affecting, you know, taking away opportunities for other TIFs so much as far as assessed value or acreage. Um, the, the other part, you know, it's hard to tell, you know, certainly, you know, as you heard Kurt say earlier. We added thirty-four units of housing the year before, but all of a sudden we're adding a hundred and eighty, granted their debts, so that is good for, say, public works purposes. Um, but as far as pushing us that much closer to needing another, I'm not saying. I'm not saying you're going to have all elderly people or something, but pushing us that much closer to another ambulance, because just a hundred and eighty residences does create more demand for or all kinds of services.
So here's, here's another concern that, I don't know how it can be addressed. Uh, but it, I think it's a legit concern, because my taxes have gone up significantly every year over the past fifteen years. If that trend continues when I pay my house off, every month I'm going to have a mortgage for my tax bill. It's not going to change. If for some reason we have to have some more services for something in, in Thompson's town, the town Thompson's tax increases are to reflect that, I think you're going to have a lot of angry people on your hands. Um, because we, if, if the justification is, not your hands, that, that's not what I meant. You personally, just in general, we're going to have angry people on our hands, I should say. Because the public perception will be our taxes are going up because this new place went in that brought in all these people. And now they had, they need all, they have all these wants and needs and we're paying the taxes on it, not them. Uh, a matter of perception. Hon- honestly, that's just a matter of perception that I think is at least worthy of looking at when making decisions.
I don't know if you know the answer to this, Jim, but for the affordable housing TIFs, if we don't actually have kids in the project in the schools, can we still allocate it towards education?
That's a.
No.
I don't think, I don't think so, but you would, you would have to, I don't, I'm not trying to make you drive up your legal costs.
Yeah.
You definitely have to check that with.
Because for us to get our maximum or even any benefit from it.
I think you have to show.
We need to make, we need some kids in there, really.
Yeah, I think you have to show that like X number of kids are potentially going to be generated by the development, which you can do easily, right? The multiple, we have, we can help with those multipliers and you probably already know them. And then you would, you know, average out the operating costs for the schools or if the school had to like build something or then you could build that in and then you can apply it to like use your TIF money to support that. It's kind of, in that case, I don't want to say it's exactly like this, because it, these are legal terms too. It's kind of like an impact fee in that sense, you know what I mean? So you're covering your costs, but there has to be some connection to the development.
I think, uh, Ryan, to answer some of your concerns, um, the, the answer I would give to people worried about tax increases or service increases i- is really that we have a housing crisis. You know, and this is something we're doing to address that. And this is a huge impact on a housing crisis, both in workforce housing units and generating specific affordable units. Um, that will still pay a very large tax bill that I think that we can work on this math, but I think will more than offset any services it uses. Um, I do know that Jeff knows some people over in Brunswick. He could check with, uh, you know, Fire for Josh and, and the chief and such and ask, you know, this new Sandpiper building, you know, how's it, how's it performing for you guys? Are you making a lot of trips out there or not? Um, you know, the, the nice thing about a new building like this is it's absolutely state-of-the-art safety. You know, best safety systems, fire sprinklers throughout, um, fire-rated walls. Whereas, you know, a nineteen-sixties ranch or cake, I think, you know, Jeff knows the difference between a fully sprinkled building and, and one that's not. And I hope that that will help avoid any costly situations for the town that minimize any safety risks for the people who are there.
I have one question I wanted to ask as well. I apologize for my voice. I'm sick. Um, I wanted to ask, what would you do for those ten units if you did do them at eighty percent AMI? Well, how would you determine who gets in those depart, in those apartments?
That's a great question, Anne. Um, and we do it the same way we do at Sandpiper, where we would post them. Um, and we would give, you know, a little description of, of what you need to do to qualify. Um, and, and you need to make eighty percent or less than the, you know, area median income. Um, and then we would, we would take that application. We would gather the materials that John Hodg, the Housing Authority, would need to verify that they qualify and get that verification back. And then they, we would rent them the unit with a regular lease.
Okay.
At the age of this.
The one first come, first served.
It first come, first served, if you're qualified. I mean, if you're a felon or you have very bad credit, uh, that's not qualified.
Uh, what are you going to do with the old building? This thing?
It's not great. Yeah, it's, it's a great building and we're keeping it as an office building. I think it'll be a great resource for the, you know, work-from-home crowd.
Okay, so you're not going to rent that out of here?
No, no, we're not going to demolish it or, or do anything different with it.
Cool. Other questions? All right, so then, uh, I don't think we really need to vote on anything. But no, I think.
Vote.
Yeah, but uh, we can vote to table it until we get a little more additional information based on the direction we gave these gentlemen this evening.
Second.
That was an emotion.
No, I.
Just say something for you.
All right, so Marie moved and.
And I'll second Marie's motion.
I thought I made her say.
All right, here's the roll call. Uh, Ryan?
Yeah.
Marie?
Yes.
Matt?
Yes.
Anne?
Yes.
Okay. All right, we just still have one agenda item left.
All right.
It's an easy one, though.
Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Thank you for, uh.
She'd like to do another short interview.
Hey, Jim, could you do that? I have way more agenda items.
I have to get back.
Just leave, like two minutes.
Hey, Jim, could you, uh?
We'll be long.
Yeah. Can you get out?
One question.
Push it, push it.
That'll be long.
Get some rest.
All right, uh, item twenty-five, forty-two. Consideration any appropriate actions to accept an easement to allow for maintenance of the banking support Pleasant Point Road, Kevin and Anne-Marie Kernan and Francis Frick.
Talking fast.
So in front of the Kernan and the Frick residences, we've got another place with a, um, shoulder of the road starting to get close to cutting underneath it. Uh, so we've got Barton Construction's collected some rocks out at the transfer station right now. And they were hoping to do the work within, say, the next month or so. And we approached the Kernan family and Francis Frick's family for an easement. Um, and both are willing to do so.
Is that on Forsyth Road?
No, Pleasant Point Road. I don't know if you noticed, last fall, we did some work.
It's off Forsyth.
In front of the Emery residence. And that helped stabilize that, came out really good. And we get the best price and we charge us twenty thousand dollars. So it was a real good deal for all the work he did. Um, so we're going to have them do another section. Once this is done, all our emergency work should be done. And then we can look around and start trying to do some of the planting things that maybe can protect things from becoming a room.
Yeah, the work on Mallett Drive. Like problems. Because I drove by and my daughter says, can I go down Mallett Drive? And when I went by, it looked like she could. Yeah, you can drive by. And she got there and she couldn't drive by and she had to back the bus all the way up to the next truck.
That's a skills test.
Oh, yeah, it is. Yeah, it is.
So, um, you guys have the power as part of the housekeeping things at the Tommy Norths to accept easements. So we're asking you to accept an easement from Kevin and Marie Kernan and one from Francis Frick to allow us to do work on the road shoulder.
Do a motion and move to accept an easement to allow for maintenance of banking, supporting Pleasant Point Road from Kevin and Anne-Marie Kernan and Francis Frick. Moving second. Mark, please.
Okay.
Anne has her hand up.
Oh.
No, no, I approve.
Okay.
We'll, we'll start with Anne.
I approve.
Okay. Ryan?
Yes.
Marie?
Yes.
Matt?
Yes.
Okay.
Very good. All right, one last thing to do.
I make a motion, we adjourn.
Second.
Move to seconded.
Matt?
Yes.
And Marie?
Yes.
Ryan? Anne? And I keep wanting to call you Patty.
What if I said no? I don't, I don't want to adjourn. I want to sit here all night. We are your best. I got nothing better to do. It's not true.
Nine-thirty, holy crap, I don't think we've ever had a meeting this long that I've been in.
No.
Oh, we used to.